... council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here, I declare a quorum present, please stand and join in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of October 16th?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? Eugene.
Thank you.
And Mike, second.
I think, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir, if you could go to the microphone, Ed, and name an address for the audience.
My name's Ed Devoe, 32 Oakwood. We're doing a Ward Two road project over there, and concerned about the ditches that were laid in across my property, and other than some of my neighbors also has caused some havoc. Most of my problems laying with a water service that came across. I did a little bit of investigation to find out, the mule or bee boxes that are set in there are six foot tall. My ditch lays from the top of the ground to the bottom of the ditch, two feet. I was able to extend the bee box up above, which was another two feet, which is on the top of the ditch, which lays my service from the bottom of the ditch to my service of only two feet of cover to the bottom of this ditch. Furthermore, when this road was put in, it was a bunch of question marks, thinking that these ditches are getting awful big. We, you know, we all sat in a meeting and decided, you know, as a whole, that, you know, we warranted ditches versus curb and gutter and sidewalks and so forth, that no one ever dreamed that these ditches would be as big as they are. I'm on the top, I'm on the crown of the street where I'm at. I don't see warranted putting a culvert under my driveway, because it could have pitched from the driveway in both directions where these drains are at. One to Edgebrook and then one to Oakwood, because I'm on the corner of the block. You know, I sent a couple emails, you know, I truly think that the aesthetics of this ditch devalued my property for as tall as it is. It almost looks like it needed retaining wall versus where I can do, I can't maintain this ditch at all. Looking for the city to do something, you know, to make this more aesthetic and work as properly as it is. I've never had water before, I've lived here for 33 years, and never had a flooding problem. My neighbors don't have flooding problems with me, and we're the top of the street. And to warranty some of these ditches that were put in, it's just, I didn't, I don't understand it. I have some pictures, if you, you know.
Okay, if you want to, we'll pass them down. I was going to ask about that. Yeah. Hey, Ed, if you go back to the mic, so the rest of the council.
Like what I was explaining, there's a 30-inch storm sewer that runs not four feet from this ditch. That somewhere along the line, they could have tagged that ditch into another inlet into this storm sewer. I just think it could have ever addressed a lot better than this. It's very hard to maintain.
Well, I received your email the other day, and I definitely had a question about the water service, and I know I put a call into the manager, give me some answers, and I think Matt will have some, but I drove out there again this morning, and some, I didn't notice that one, the bee box. I know there was some that were sticking out of the ground, I was just curious how.
Well, that's a telescopic bee box, it goes down.
Right, no, no.
They go to grade.
Right, that's.
But I pulled it all the way up in the air, just so I could get reference of how deep that actually is to my service. Because that's a six-foot bee box, I have two foot exposed of the, of the above ground.
Oh, you pulled that one up, is what you said.
And then there's another, you know, two foot to the bottom of the ditch, which leaves me only two foot cover of that service.
Okay. I know we've got a couple of questions on that. You guys want to wait till we get to that point in the meeting, ask the questions?
What is that point in the meeting, when's that?
It's here, they're in for a payment tonight, correct? Swallow?
Yeah.
And they're, they're under Public Works.
I mean, Matt York, he had me meet with the swallow designer out there, and I talked to him, and he kind of defended his own, you know, design, and, you know, I mentioned to him that it would be too awful difficult for, since I'm on the crown of the street, to pitch my, to pitch the ditch east and pitch it west from my driveway, which inadvertently would bring the ditch from the west side of my property probably up a good 20 inches, which would save my service, and just brick up that culvert that's under the driveway.
All right, you had a question for Mr. Devoe?
Well, it was more a statement, because I've walked, obviously, that street a few times, and had some questions, you know, but that's, barring getting an instrument and shooting it myself, I would recommend that we get somebody to shoot it to see, A, are all those things at the right elevation? And if so, are some of the things that Mr. Devoe are asking, can they actually be done? Because us talking back and forth.
Right.
So the only way to move forward, I think, is to get somebody out there and shoot some.
Well, under item two, we can direct the acting manager and the attorney to take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address that? Yes. Whoever would like to be first, sure.
I'm Jerry Monti, 138 Oakwood, and I'm addressing some of the similar situations that Ed just discussed right now. But I'm not as knowledgeable as him, but I can see that the bee box is up so high, and I'm worried about possible, our water freezing in the wintertime with the cold weather we have. Also, the ditches are so low that we can't maintain it, we can't get a lawnmower down there. It's just going to wind up to be a mud pile, and that can be dangerous, because it is two feet deep. Also, the ditches are so close to the edge of the driveway, excuse me, that when you see snow and everything else, it's going to be hard just to take a, back out of your driveway, it's not safe. So you're going to find some cars or kids in those ditches. And so I'm looking at the possible part where it's unsafe, right there, and also my water freezing. And I think, first of all, it is unsightly, too. It did no good to evaluate our property. The streets looks nice, but the ditches don't.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I contacted the city manager myself on this, and I wanted a meeting with the engineer. I still haven't got that response back, and when we're going to have a meeting with that, because I'm looking at this and saying, why can't we put a pipe in and put catch bases in? If you have, if you have a two-foot ditch, why can't you put a two-foot pipe in with catch base? To level it all off, but I'm still waiting for the city manager to get back to me to set up this meeting to the engineers, because I know an engineer is going to tell me, no, it can't be done, but common sense and, you want to say college or whatever, there isn't common sense sometimes.
Well, I know we had the discussion about the ditches and everything over there, and I,
but this is.
We went with the ditches, I understand, that's a different issue, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
But this is ridiculous.
No, no, I see what, believe me, I saw a few months ago how it looked. One other gentleman, yes?
Hello, everybody, good evening. I'm James Crothers, and I also live on Oakwood Drive. Ed Devoe is my neighbor, and I'm basically here to support him. I've been up there for over 30 years. We're probably the highest ground on that street, Ed's house and my house, because we both live on the corner of that road, and everything grade runs towards the creek and down the other, towards Irving Park. And when I saw the ditch that they put in over there by Ed, I just thought like, what overkill that was, and it certainly didn't seem necessary, and now they've, you know, they've, they've made your property look different, now you've got to worry about your water freezing, and somebody getting hurt in the ditch, the grandkids, the little kids that are around or something like that playing in there. And for myself, across the street, it's not, it's not terrible. I have like, the other gentleman that was just up here, I do have a low spot where they ran my pipe. The storm sewer used to go right through my property, all the way to the back of my property, and it still does. They didn't take that part out, but then they disconnected it at one spot and moved it over to the corner of my ditch, where that now goes, it's probably a good two, two and a half feet down. It's going to be a little bit, much harder to mow or anything like that. It's a kind of a catch basin for leaves and different things like that, with the grade on there and stuff. But it certainly isn't as bad as my neighbor's yard and stuff like that, but I do see it may give me some problems in the future also, the way they ran that ditch and stuff. So, basically, I'm just here to support my neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Oakwood 201, John Tagel. They already talked about the ditches, I won't say nothing about that. But the mailboxes kind of put in loosely. Is that the way they're going to stay? Like 201 and 197, I noticed, they, you can move them around pretty bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I do have two written communiques. One is from Joe Beautis, just wants to thank the council for the plaque and the proclamation. The other one is from a resident regarding the removal of the trees. Just wanted to say that the guys did a, the company we hired did a great job, and it was cleaned up beautifully, and they're happy to know that they're going to also get a new tree eventually. And. Nothing on the mayor's report, I'll leave it to the manager, the police chief.
There's the annual Veterans Day breakfast this Saturday, from 8:30 to 10:30 at Salt Creek Golf Course. All veterans are invited to attend. After that, we'll be having a ceremony over at the Veterans Memorial at 11 o'clock. If by chance the weather is too bad, we plan on going forward at the memorial, but if there is any type of change, that they had to move it up to Salt Creek, we'd post someone there to send everyone up north, so. The other announcement I have is we're hosting another Coffee with the Cop. This will be on Tuesday, November 18th, at the Starbucks inside of Target, from 11 to 1. There's no speeches or agenda, just a chance for the community to meet with the local police officers and bring up any questions they have, and stop by and have a cup of coffee with us. So we invite everyone to come out to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. I undertake a motion to approve the nine items on the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, second.
Anybody want to make a change? Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Well, as we discussed earlier in the meeting, you said they have a payment to.
No, no, that's under Public Works number two, Swallow Construction.
Item number four on the consent agenda is a payment. The item number two is extending, asking for extra days.
Oh, maybe we should take it out, then.
That's totally separate, Mayor.
Pull that one. Item number four. Okay, Alderman Woods, do you agree?
Yes.
And Alderman Sizmarsky, you're second there.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Before I go? Okay. So let's remove number four. I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution providing for the adoption of a facade improvement program policy. Item number two, approval of purchase and installation of pressure relief valves in a not to exceed amount of $97,933. Item number three, approval of partial payment, number one, to John Neary Construction for the Woodside subdivision drainage project, a not to exceed amount of $192,097.35. Skip number four. Item number five, approval of partial payment, number two, to Kim Construction for a manhole rehabilitation project areas one and two, in the not to exceed amount of $135,365.84. Item number six, approval of amendment number three with H.R. Green for the El General here, Western Access Project, to extend the professional services agreement additional six months, and increase in the amount not to exceed $440,000. Item number seven, approval of change order number one to the 2013 infrastructure improvement project, Cedar Montrose contract, reducing the contract amount by $216,818.67 for a total contract of $2,573,332.33. Item number eight, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the engineering services not to amount, in an amount not to exceed $28,956. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairing reports, Alderman Woods, planning and zoning.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
No report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Lazara.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two to report. First one, approval of final payment request to Northwest General Contractors for the 2013 infraction improvement project in an amount not to exceed $136,302.41.
That is your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Jacob. Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So everything's done? We double check those punch lists?
Mr. York, could you, please?
Compare both punch lists, the one in Frank and ours?
Yes, that project is complete.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Um.
Question on this or the bills?
On this.
Okay.
Talking about.
Go ahead.
Sweet baby rays.
Yeah, that was looked at again today, and we need you to come out and show us our, error of our ways, because we cannot find what your, what your issue is.
All right, I'd be glad to do that tomorrow.
Would love it, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes.
My second item is reporting a recommendation request from Swallow Construction for a time extension on the Ward Two Streets project for additional work completed outside original scope of project.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Woods.
I thought we reviewed this, and they didn't have any time coming, or we already, staff has already discussed this.
Mr. York.
Staff has ability to extend days due to weather. This was a contract extension date from the contractor through us, and that's why we're bringing it to you. So we're actually changing the end date of the project. So the substantial completion end date was the 25th of October. They're asking for an additional three days, which would be the 27th, 28th, and 29th. So then, they didn't get done with the project until the 30th, so there would be one day of liquidated damages.
What's the basis of the extension?
They're, they're, they were given two fire hydrants that were missed from the original plans to install, and they requested a day per fire hydrant. And then there was a, on the Forest View side, they hit an unmarked water line, which delayed the project until the water line was shut down and it pumped back out. I would not, I would not be in favor of giving them a three-day extension due to the fact that I think one fire hydrant a day is a little bit absurd, especially when they're going down, and, I mean, it's not like they had to go back to that project. We saw it, we found it beforehand. So I would say at most one or two days, that would be my recommendation.
Do you have a follow-up before I go to somebody else? Alderman Woods?
Other than maybe changing it from three to two days that staff recommends?
All right, Alderman Lazara, you're next.
No, actually.
Taking care of it.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you're next.
I have a question, so. We extended the contract for two fire hydrants, okay? I grant it. When we asked them to extend the, extend to put those two fire hydrants, did they come flat out and say they need three additional days right off the front, or not?
No.
Mr. York.
So then I recommend that we deny the three days, because they had the option to take it or not. Our guys probably could install those hydrants in one day, okay? So my recommendation, if they didn't come flat out, I know exactly what they're trying to do. It's the same situation that ran in Cedar, South Cedar, that they're trying not be liable for some days that they didn't finish on time. I'm not going into it, but I suggest no days.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you're next.
Yeah. Matt, you said they missed two on the plans, weren't they not on the plans, or?
Mr. York.
Yeah, they were not on the plans.
So who did the plans?
The designers.
Trotter.
Yes. Yeah, as the, as the existing water main was on the, let's say it was on the east side of Edgebrook, the new water main's on the west side of Edgebrook, and there was two locations where there was a fire hydrant that was then missing.
Well, tell them to go get it from Trotter.
You have a fellow?
Tell them to go get it from Trotter. Say no.
Well, the motion was for a three-day extension. We had Alderman Woods requested to change it to two-day, and then Alderman Wesley said, not at all. Go ahead, Matt, you want to say something before I?
Yeah, just to talk about Alderman Eugene Wesley's discussion point. I didn't give them the option at that time to ask for extended days at that point in time. My feeling was that there was still plenty of project time left to go. So that was, I mean, because that was back in probably August, August, maybe even early. Yeah, probably August was when that took place. So, and they also had other issues, I mean, they were down for two days because of equipment malfunctions, so.
Okay. Alderman Sizmarsky, you're next.
He answered it with the water mains that was marked.
Okay.
Actually, why was, what, they hit a water main that wasn't marked?
Go ahead.
Yeah, there was an unmarked water line that was in the pit, that was on the other side of the road.
What was the additional cost of the project or the repairs?
There wasn't really any additional cost to the project, it was just time spent pumping out the, pumping out the vault that they had dug already, and then filled up with water.
Okay, Alderman Woods, you were next, and then I'll go to Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, Matt, since those fire hydrants weren't on the plan, I can only assume that there were no fire hydrants on the job. Somebody had to order them, somebody probably had to pick them up or have them delivered. So it wasn't installed in sequence. And I get it, if everything's there, you could probably get it done, but it, in some respects, it seems like a reasonable request, and our goal isn't to, you know, overly punish people, so. You know, somewhere probably would be fair to allot them some time. Because if they did timely, if they did ask us in a timely manner, we probably would have extended the time to them, and they could have made a bigger deal about it, and we want more money, because it wasn't on the print, we've got to go backwards, go back and tie in, so.
I agree. Alderman Jacob.
How much time did it take to do that dewatering of the pits site?
I think it was approximately four to five hours. So, I mean, it takes a pretty good chunk out today.
So two days, like you had said, and Alderman Woods had said, would probably be appropriate, then?
Frank, did you want to amend your motion to the two days?
Wait, we got any questions?
I will, but wait, first, let me get one motion, then we can go back.
Yes, I'll amend it.
And Tony, yours?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My question, again, they are playing the hardball right now with us, like we did South Cedar. They know they're late with their project, so now they're coming to us at the last minute date, asking for three days, because they were late with the project. Second of all, if they had a hard time getting hydrants, we have done it in the past. Matter of fact, we did it on Deer Path, that we had two hydrants, and we gave Swallow hydrant, and they gave us back that hydrant, because they were short of hydrant. So, playing this game here, I don't like this, playing this game with these contractors. I agree, we signed a contract with the contractor regardless. If you want to play the hardball, then we go after Trotter, because they missed off the design. But for us to sit here and give additional days for projects, knowing that they knew there was a deadline to finish, and their equipment broke down, that ain't my problem. Our own department head, which is Matt, recommend not giving them days.
Wait, he said not give them days, because it was August, and he didn't, he didn't give them the option at that time. Is that correct?
But I'm trying to say here, we're playing the shell game here. And this council sits here and plays a shell game with these contractors, and we might well not even put an end date when the contractor is going to be done. Let's just say, when you're done, we'll finalize the plan. It's a shell game that we're playing again. South Cedar was that way, Montrose was that way. Now we're playing a shell game again with this contractor, okay? Enough is enough, guys. So whatever the society, if you guys vote on two days, that's fine. Mine is a no vote for no days, because they had more than enough time. AK, that's the city for the hydrants, and don't tell me, do we have hydrants in stock?
Mr. York.
Probably, but I don't know.
Okay, so again, they could approach us if there's a hydrant issue and ask for a hydrant. We just replace one of its shell in-house. We always got hydrants, guys. So Swallow knew the plan. We know if they're short of hydrant, come see us. We gave them two on Deer Path, and they pay us back once we installed it. Quit playing the shell game with these people.
And I knew the question about the engineer missing it would come up. I already asked the attorney, you want to give your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, the, when they're doing that investigation, it's not based on the site, and if we don't have that marked, those items marked, it's not going to be picked up by the engineer, and the contractor can only perform what is provided for in the design plans.
Go ahead, Alderman Ray Wesley.
How could it not be picked up? I mean, you've got so many feet that each hydrant has to be. So if you've got a street that's, if it's 500 feet, then you've got 1,000 feet, there's two hydrants. Makes math.
As my understanding, it was the location of the initial one, is that accurate?
Mr. York.
Yeah, they, they just didn't carry over the, if there was 14 hydrants on the original project, the existing project, there was, ended up being 12 on the new project. It just didn't carry over, as they were drawing the line down. As they were drawing the line down to show where the water main's going to go, and they looked across the street, and there was a fire hydrant, they get a new fire hydrant right there. They missed two of them. That happens sometimes.
Go ahead, you want to follow-up? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yeah, so, Mr. Attorney, that doesn't...
Mr. Brown.
I'm, I'm still not getting it. Maybe, maybe years ago, when these were put in, it was 700 feet, and our code says 500 feet now, or whatever it is. So, I don't understand where they could still miss.
Well, obviously, they're respecting it based on what they saw out on the, on the conditions. We can certainly have a discussion with the engineer relative to missing, having missed that, and if there's any additional cost or expense, which I don't believe there was, but we could certainly address that.
Which there is.
Well, I don't think there is a cost or expense.
Now, there is, because three days.
Now, the, the cost would be, the liquidated damage is what, about $1,500 per day, something?
Correct.
And that's not a cost to us, that's a, basically a fine to the contractor. But it's not a...
It's not a fine, it's a...
Oh, it's not a fine. Go ahead, give me the legal law.
No, it's because damages are difficult to ascertain, so the law provides for liquidated damages in those circumstances. It's not designed to be a fine or a penalty, but simply to offset the...
Not a cost to us.
Correct, but it is not, definitely not a cost to the city.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. My opinion, to be honest with you, I mean, if contractors are short one day or two days, I don't want to start crucifying builders because they're just going to add it into our prices. I think the bigger issue we have is those ditches that the residents are here for, more than this $3,000 or something we're talking about. Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
I'll bring it up again. They missed the deadline regardless. They signed the deadline. Are we going now allow any contractor to come up here and say, "We aren't going to put a deadline on any more projects or put any liquidated damage"? They're playing the shell game here. Okay, enough is enough. I understand your concern about penalizing the contractors, but if they don't make the deadline, there's got to be something there. If you don't make a deadline on your job, Mayor...
Right, no, I understand.
Do you not get penalized or written up for it? If I don't make a deadline at my job, I get discipline action. And it's the same thing here.
I just want to make sure our prices don't go up when, when we're out to bid, because the word will get out there, that's...
Well, it'll get out.
It's going to cost us.
Do the jobs the right way, then, Mayor.
I, I understand your...
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Matt, when you said that they hit the water line, because it wasn't marked, was it their fault that they hit it? I mean, they didn't know about it, right?
Well, it's unmarked, so they didn't know, they didn't know it was there. It's probably, it's probably the city's responsibility to locate the, locate the lines.
So, they had no idea they hit it, and then...
Yeah, I mean, it happens all the time. You don't know a gas line's there, they hit a gas line.
Right.
You know, you don't know a sanitary sewer's there, and you hit it. I mean, it happens in construction all the time.
Like Alderman Jacob had said, it took them five hours to pump it out, so...
About four or five hours.
Okay.
All right, so, just so we're clear, we had an amended motion of adding only two days of liquidated damages. Alderman Lozaro and Alderman Catalano, do you wish to change that motion, or is that you're going to stay your motion?
That's my motion.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, stay with him.
All right, let's roll call.
I guess, hold on, hold on, wait. Something different?
So, when is the end date for this contract now? Are we going to get another extension as they come forward? I mean, is there a new date now for this completion?
It extended two days.
No.
Go ahead, Matt.
No, it doesn't extend the project two days. It extends substantial completion two days. So, I mean, the project, the project should be done on Monday. It quite possibly could be done tomorrow. But if we add, if we add the two days, we could, it could ultimately be, I think it would stay at Monday, the 10th. I mean, or it could go to the 12th. I mean, we will still have some punchless items, which is okay to be done after final completion, because we have to get all the grass down before the Water Utilities Division can get out and check all the B-boxes, and that will be done on Wednesday of next week.
So, are they going to come back to us?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, are they going to come back to us next week and say, "Oh, now they need a couple extra days because the mailboxes aren't installed correctly", and we're going to grant you two days?
I mean, that's...
I just want to know when this is going to stop.
Go ahead, Matt.
I mean, I think that's part of, of why they asked for it now. And they kind of got into a little bit of a trick bag asking for this time extension, because we haven't had a council meeting in a while. So, I mean, because when we talked about it originally out in the field, I think it was the 17th of October, which we would have then, or on the 18th, which was that Tuesday, which we had the board meeting on Thursday night, which we couldn't prepare this information in that sort of time. So, we did get, we did get a little bit of a trick bag on that because of the, just the scheduling.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And you don't need to call me, because I'm going to sign it. Okay. That passes. That concludes your report.
That concludes our report, Mayor, thank you.
Finality Administration, Alderman Sizmarsky?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Other business, we do have one item, item number four, approval of partial payment number three to Swallow Construction for the Ward Two Phase One Infrastructure Project not to exceed amount of 313, 133. Do I have a motion before we go on? No motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we can have a discussion.
I have a discussion.
I get it.
Mayor, I had a couple of questions on this.
Oh, I, I didn't hear that.
No, no, it's okay. Matt, I asked Jeff about the concerns of the water line. I received the email, you know, water line's definitely a concern, and, and some of those, well, you pulled the extension, Mr. Debo pulled the extension out, but I saw some are still sticking out of the ground, which is also another concern. Can those be, some that are sticking out of the ground, can they be lowered? But where do we stand on the frost line on these water lines? Because I don't want to see all these B-boxes. If we get another winter like last year, we're, we'll be having problems. Where do we stand?
I went through this with Trotter and Associates. They explained to me that the B-box is at the current location as it used to be. Once it comes out of that B-box, it takes a 45, goes directly, almost straight down. It doesn't go straight out, it goes down. And then, it's underground, about seven feet underground, once it gets to the ditch line. That's what was explained to me by the, the person that was out there watching the installations. For your B-box question, B-boxes don't get finalized until SOD gets put down, and then also after the Utilities Division goes out and makes sure that all the B-boxes work properly. So, those will, those will get lowered, back to grade.
All right, so, the water line from the B-box to the house goes down.
The water line from the B-box to the house is that it's existing...
Existing. But, so to the street, to the water main is where it goes down?
Yes.
But the B-box itself was never moved?
The B-box itself was never moved. The only thing that was, was changed with the B-box was that it was a inch-and-a-half-inch service line instead of a one-inch service line coming in with a, with a one-inch adapter on the other side of it. So, that wasn't, that wasn't modified. Or that was modified just because the new water code is that we have one-and-a-half-inch service lines.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not an expert on construction, but know a little bit about the frost line. So, if we didn't move the B-boxes and you put in those ditches, those B-boxes are no longer 42 inches deep. Is that right? How can that be? Because the, it, it just doesn't sound right to me, and I'm, I'm no engineer. I just got simple, general knowledge for construction, and I, I'm thinking that those B-boxes are no longer, I mean, we probably should have moved those, in my opinion, but again, not an engineer. Do we have answer for that, then?
Yeah, I mean, the, the project was developed by engineers. I mean, I'm not an engineer either, so I have to lean on their expertise. Their statement is that those water lines are below the frost level. That's what, that's what was explained to me, so...
The, the water lanes, but not, we're not...
The water line, the B-box, everything.
The B-box, because I know last year with the winter we had, and I don't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, Matt, we did have some of those B-boxes freeze up, right? Then we have some residents had some issues, and we found that the B-boxes were frozen or whatnot, because, I mean, last year was incredibly cold. I, I'm just, go ahead.
And the, the reason why some of those froze was because they sat on top of the sanitary, or the storm sewer system. These are below the storm sewer system. The storm sewer, or the line itself is seven feet into the ground with approximately, probably a foot of bedding on top of it, of insulation. So, it's, it's not like, it's just in a trench with no, with no insulation around it.
Another que, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'm going to go back to my earlier statement, if you will, that, I mean, we need to have like an independent engineer shoot the grade, and while they're out there, they can check. Since three residents have had the concern, are those things high enough, or do we need to, to lower them? I mean, the grade is slightly changed, I don't know. Maybe they were only three feet, three and a half feet before. I, I don't know any of that, but we should certainly find that out by investigating it. And there are areas where you got, Matt and I walked the street, and there's some areas where you've got three flare-end structures leading into this quasi-swale thing with half a tree root chopped out and the trees ripped. You know, within a year, that thing's dead and falling. I mean, there's some other issues, and I think to, to spend a couple dollars and get an engineer to shoot that stuff would be cheap insurance. And answer all our questions.
Okay, well, we, we do still have 10% retained. We have about almost 127,000. I know the, the attorney's whispering in my ear that the work has been completed, but some of these other issues could be addressed. Mr. Brown, you want to give your legal opinion? Because I'm sure I'm not giving as well as you.
Yeah, under the contract, there's a provision that, that establishes when the payment obligation of the city as the owner is set forth, and it's once the, the engineer indicates that the work has been performed, it's been performed in a workmanlike fashion, and that the amount of work or the status of the work is consistent with the charges. And you've got a statement from Matt Bushnell, senior project engineer from Trotter and Associates, that indicates that the application for this payment of 313,133,004 meets the obligations of the contractor documents, which is why they've provided the certification and the recommendation. So, to the extent there are issues remaining, as the mayor said, you do have 126,945,01 left on the retention, and if there's an issue there. But your engineer's saying that work was done in accordance with the contract specifications.
But what Alderman Woods is asking for, independent person shoot the grade.
I'm, I'm not looking to hold up that guy's payment. I'm looking that there's genuine concerns here, we have some issues, and I don't want to wait till everybody's water pipes freeze up and blow up, or...
We can...
You know, somebody cuts their foot off trying to mow, mow a ditch that's almost completely vertical.
Well, the chief just has made a note of that, and that will be taken care of before we make the final payments and address the issues of the ditches and stuff. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
So...
He had his hand up first.
Sorry. Pat, I understand the, oh, you know, your, your speech here, that we pay the payment and all that. My question to you then, if that, if those, and we shoot those grades, and they are wrong, or that water main needed to be lowered at those connections, we are already paying the guy for that project.
You don't have to engineer.
Okay, we paying for them already. So, I understand your, your legal perspective, but there's got to be a legal loophole that says we're going to pay for something that's done, but if it ain't done right, and we find a problem, we repay them for their money. The engineer's going to walk up scot-free after this whole project's done, because we don't hold any money back to hold the design team and the engineer, overseeing the engineer, so there's no bond money saving back for them. So, this contractor, if he did do it to the specs, which I don't say he did or did not, and there's a problem now, that poor contractor's biting a bullet, but the engineer's going to walk scot-free. We're paying the contractor that, yes, work is completed, like you say, but if it ain't completed the right way, we repay the guy. So, don't tell me he'll say, "Well, you already paid me for that. I'm not going to go back here as additional charge to recorrect it." I understand you've got $100,000 left, but there's got to be a law or something that's got to be changed in that policy or whatever we have to do to change that, because I don't like that one at all. So, that's only my opinion. But I'm just saying is, so we're paying a guy that might not be right.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, and this issue's come up before with, with this council. The Illinois Prompt Payment Act requires you to pay those who do work for and on behalf of the city, you know, in a timely fashion within 30 days of receipt unless there's an issue. So, if there was an issue as to whether or not this Swallow built it in accordance with the specifications, you would have every right to withhold that, and Trotter would notify you that there was an issue with that. Your, your design, your engineer is, review engineer is saying that this was constructed in accordance with the specifications. Now, your question goes to if the specifications were incorrect. Well, that's not Swallow's problem. They built it in accordance with the specifications, and they're entitled to be compensated and paid in accordance with their contract. To the extent that happens, that's another issue that you can take up with the, with the engineer, and they've got errors and omissions coverage and so forth. If they designed it incorrectly, if you shoot the grades and you determine that that was in fact, and I'm not saying it was or wasn't, but if you find that to be the case, then we've got another discussion that we can have relative to, to that. But again, if it, if, what you've got is a certification that it was done in accordance with the specifications, and they did 313,133,004 worth of work, and they, that work was done in accordance with the specifications, under those circumstances, I don't write the law. I agree with you, we should be able to hold it until the very end, but the state statute doesn't agree with us, and it says that we are obligated to pay for the work that's been performed.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you had your hand up before I...
So, I want to get back to, the question is, we're going to have another engineer shoot this grade. When's it going to be done? Who's going to do it? And how much is it?
Well, my understanding is we want somebody different other than Trotter to do this. We have plenty of engineers on our list.
But how fast could we get this done? And how much, I mean...
Matt and the chief can make that call, I mean...
Well, not if it's over $10,000, they can't.
They'll have to, they'll have to ask.
I don't think that it's going to be more than $10,000, but I have no idea of what the cost is going to be, and I don't know who we're going to use to do it. Obviously, this is kind of taking on a little bit different light in the past couple of days. So, we are, we are willing to go out and get someone to shoot those grades, but it'll just be based upon timing from who we can get to come out and do it.
Right, we understand that.
In the meantime...
Go ahead.
I want an engineer, engineer in here. I got questions. And I want him here within the next two weeks. And matter of fact, why don't we just have, send a letter out to the residents in that area too, so they could come too?
Mike, did you have your hand up? Okay. Okay, well, let me make a quick comment. Still on the engineer, go ahead, Frank.
Actually, I was just wondering, do we owe Trotter any money on this project?
I'm sure we do.
Do you know what that number is?
No, I do not, off the top of my head. Okay, all right. So, we're addressing the water line issue. The other issue is the slope of those swales, which we haven't, or the ditches. Well, listen, it's up to me, we'd have pipes there and no ditches. But the understanding was the residents want to keep it rural. Wait, hold on, wait, relax. Keep it rural, that's why the ditches are there. And I understand if we would have put in curbs in this, and they would have put more concrete, that's, you know, we, we're trying to make sure the area doesn't flood. But this is going to be a decision on the council on how we want to proceed with this stuff. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. I mean, part of the reason I'm pushing to do a little more extended... I mean, part of the reason I'm pushing to do a little more extensive maybe than I would before, because this is setting the pace for Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four. So, if there's any modifications or changes that we're running in here, we need to make them, know them, so whatever incremental cost we incur is really, again, cheap insurance for us to, moving forward. I mean, we're spending probably, what, another six to eight million dollars on the roads.
It should be another, to do, finish these two streets and the other two streets, I think it's about another five million dollars, if, well, if I remember what the budget was, yeah. Anything further on that? So, we're going to shoot the grades, and who knows, maybe the, maybe the grades are wrong and those ditches are not built to spec, but we'll have to shoot the grades first. Anything further on that? All right, we have a motion and a second. Let me, hold on. Okay, Alderman Woods and Alderman Sizmarsky made the motion, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
On the motion, this is the motion for the payout, that was the item 313,000.
Did he say, did he say anything?
Yes.
Mike said yes.
Thank you. Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval listed bills November 6th. Alderman Sizmarsky?
I have a question for attorney first. We have a payout to Trotter here. Do we have to...
Mr. Brown?
Do we hold this one or no?
I'm not sure if that's related to this project. If it is, you certainly can pull that off since they've got questions.
The amount of 24,090.
Yeah, so if that's the case, you can, you can remove that from the list of bills payable and simply make a motion to pay the total amount less the 24,000.
Hold on. You got a, well, I, I see the finance director's already got his calculator, I was going to do it by hand. No way, we don't have a motion yet, we're... Brad, you have that total for, for Alderman Sizmarsky? Right, I was going to do it, but... Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, if you remove the Trotter invoice for 24,090, the new list of bill amount would
Repeat that again. All right, Mike, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Wesley, question?
The motion was to pull the Trotter bill for 24,090 off?
Yep.
That was the bill?
That's it.
I just want to verify.
It was to approve, without that bill, 1,374,368,01. That's the motion. Alderman Sizmarsky, Alderman Jacob, second. Alderman Ray Wesley, you got a question?
Yeah, one more thing. Frank Lozaro was asking how much is left?
Is left? Is it on that?
Yeah, but he probably could tell better than I can.
Mr. Wilson, can you, you might as well take that check back, since it's not...
Yes, take it back and give the answer, because it's on there. I just don't want to give the wrong information. No, it's not zero.
No, it ain't zero. Go ahead, you want to have a conference? Do we need to take a break? Kidding.
Well, we could pay the bills. We, we just took the 24,000 out, and we could come back to...
Any other questions on the bills? Well, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Hold on, wait.
Quiet, please.
You made the motion, hold on. You made the motion.
Who's second is?
Peter did.
Peter Jacob.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, Peter.
Ready? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes, and Mr. Wilson, you have the answer?
Yes, Mayor. Notwithstanding the payment that, that was just pulled to add back in, before that, the remaining balance of the contract for this phase of the construction was 10,950.
After this?
Correct.
After the 20,000, whatever it was?
24,000, correct.
24,000, okay.
So, an additional, just under 11,000.
Okay. Go ahead, you have a follow, real quick on that item?
So, how long are we going to hold this check for? Until we get our answers?
Mr. Brown?
Until you make a determination, you know, we have to notify them that there's, questions been raised on it, and you retain that until such time as you confirm that the design, that the project was designed properly and correctly. And I assume you're going to get the shooting, the grades, and so forth.
Well, let me ask a question here. So, what if we don't get another engineering firm out here in a week, and it takes a month? Are we still going to be able to hold? I mean, I know you're going to give me the Prompt Payment Act stuff again, so I'm just curious.
Well, the Prompt Payment Act requires that you can hold it on for another 30 days, and, and you, but you have to put them on notices to the reason for that. So, the inquiry is, is, is fair, but you have to, within that next 30 days, you have to have a reason if you're not going to pay the full amount of the contract.
Okay. I, I knew it was going to come up, that's why I asked. Mr. Wilson?
Just procedurally, just to confirm with the attorney, since this was full stop hold and not even approved, this will have to go back on a future list of bills. Is that, that is correct?
Mr. Brown?
That's correct.
Okay, so we've had some where it's just been, get back to you with information, but this one was, was, wasn't even approved.
This one's been pulled, come back.
So, so this will, at some point, show back up on our list of bills.
All right, and we... Go ahead.
On this payment stuff that you rattle off all the time, Mr. Brown, does that fall under, does that fall under engineers? I thought that was only contractors.
Mr. Brown?
No, it falls under any vendors you have for the city, any work that's being performed. There is an exception for engineers with respect to the selection, and, and you don't